Anybody here want to volunteer to say an invocation? If not, I will. Let's just bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of prayer. We thank you for your promise to always be with us, to support us and help us. So we're asking for that help tonight. Help us to have a clear mind and good hearts as decisions are made. In your holy name we pray, amen. I'd like to welcome you all to the meeting. And now at 7:02, call the meeting to order and invite you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Devin, if you would take roll call, please.
McConnell.
Here.
Malley-Gallagher.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter. Steve Wallace.
Here.
Mayor Sweeney.
Here.
All's come for except the house among the Bob Porter.
Looking for approval of the agenda?
I move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now on to reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which was February 3rd.
Move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the February 3rd, 2022 regular meeting.
Okay. Moved by Mike and seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Do we have any pre-approved reports or presentations? I think so. I think everything's on the agenda. So we'll move to public comment. Is anybody here for public comment? Then we'll move to communications. Devin, do you have communications for us?
So I handed you tonight, you have a form for the McQueen House and you have a form for the city of Perry. And thanks to Megan, I thought she did an awesome job. These forms are now available on the website. You can still come in and Julie has a form available if somebody wanted to donate to both of these good causes. But she thought it would be a while that somebody could print this off at home, get a little file out, put it in the Dropbox, and it could be used as a receipt and could be sent back to them. So I just wanted to show you the work that's being put into place.
Good job, Megan.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Very nice.
I do have just a few reports or comments I'd like to bring to your attention. Although most of you know by now that PFCU, Credit Union, is coming to Perry. And we're very happy to know that. Megan, what does that stand for? Does it stand for Portland?
Portland Federal Credit.
Okay. Portland Federal Credit Union. And Megan is just looking into some of the things that they offer to see if we might be able to do business locally rather than up in Owassee. But we'll look at that. They're coming into the central pharmacy though, on the other side. Something else, I've been talking with our code enforcement officer about, Leland Scott. And that is when the DPW workers went out to check on some, what do I want to say? The rainwater drains out at the corner where Big B is going in and where KFC is. There was a lot of trash that had blown out of dumpsters that were down there. And so he and I looked into our ordinances. And there is one in the zoning ordinance, section 1302, concerning dumpsters. And it says that outdoor trash containers or dumpsters, it defines the size, are permitted only in non-residential districts or for multiple family uses, like apartment buildings. It does go on to say that a solid ornamental screening wall or fence shall be provided around all sides of the containers. An access gate shall also be provided and be of height that completely screens the containers. And then it defines maximum height of the walls and the gates and so on. And then at container or containers, the screening walls, fence and gate shall be maintained in a neat and orderly manner, free from loose rubbish, wastepaper, and that other debris. And that clearly was not the case in several of the dumpsters around, as I asked him to look at them all. So I asked him to mail letters to everybody, every business that has one, so that everybody's getting the same notice. Now, some of them already have fences and they've been there since they were put in. But obviously, many of them don't. And we didn't want any one business to feel singled out, just because theirs happened to be where the DPW workers were working. So he is sending letters out to everybody and we will be enforcing that. Giving them some time, of course, due to the weather, to get that done. But if anybody brings that to your attention, that's why it was done. And then I just wanted to let you all know too, in regard to our potential or possible joint water project with the township, the supervisor from Perry Township, Mark Fauks, and then Brent Jones from the SEDP. And I met with Ben Fredericks, our state representative, and talked to him because he is part of the committee with the MEDC, Michigan Economic Development. And presented to him our project and our desire to get MEDC money to cover the whole 20%, if we could. So it's 80 from the federal, 20 from the state. We spent about an hour with him and he was very interested. He complimented us several times on working together as municipalities and trying to jointly bring benefit to the area in jobs and in better water and so forth and so on. So just as we were leaving, Brent said to him, "So what do you think?" And he said, "I think you stand a better chance than most of the applications I've seen." So that's as much as we could get, but I thought it was a pretty good.
Positive.
Yeah, it was. But I appreciated his attention. He was very engaged. He was making notes, using his calculator, figuring out how much that would be and so forth and so on. He was very attentive. So those are the items I wanted to bring. Do we have committee reports?
I'll provide just a little quick update. The ordinance committee is continuing to meet to work on a couple of particular items I mentioned before. One is that we're looking at some potential discussion around charter amendments for this coming election cycle, specifically around the location of personnel. One around the library, and I forget the third one right now. So that is in process, as well as our continued work on the medical marijuana ordinance proposal. And we will be meeting again this coming Monday, the 21st, at 10:00 a.m. here in council chambers to continue those discussions. And also, as part of committee, the planning commission has met and has finalized by consensus a proposal that will move forward for some zoning ordinance consideration changes around the medical marijuana. And to that end, there will be a public hearing scheduled for the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, which will be March the 7th. And I believe the public hearing will start at 7:10, but stay tuned for an actual notice coming out on that. Any comments, questions?
Now, if you would just express to the planning commission our appreciation for their diligence in getting that to that point.
I did a little bit of that at our last meeting.
Great, thank you.
We'll see how it comes out from the planning or the public hearing here.
Any other committee reports? We'll move then to presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized.
Second.
It's been moved by Steve and seconded by Larry that we approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Oh, we can move on now to our old business item, which is possible approval to close an inactive bank account. And Megan has that report for us.
Hello. So last meeting, we had discussed closing the Perry Fest bank account and what were we going to do with those funds. I had mentioned that we could put a portion of the funds into an existing account fund. And I use the term restrict. I said we could restrict the use of those funds. I did reach out to our auditors. We can't restrict funds. Wrong word. We can commit to a fund balance and we can assign a fund balance. So it would still be an act of council to say, "We're putting X amount of dollars in this fund with the specific purpose of..." And so that would just take a resolution from the city. So we can do that. But we had also talked about other options for the Perry Fest money. So I also clarified that Perry Fest funds were in an account for a specific purpose. So I verified with Luke, our auditor, that as long as the funds in the account weren't given by a donor for a steadfast, "This is what you have to use my contribution for," then we can go ahead and disseminate the funds as we see fit now that Perry Fest doesn't exist. Because we feel as staff that if someone gave $100 in a specific year for a specific purpose, it's already been spent. So the money that's sitting in the account now is just general donations to the event. Or they used to do like a craft show and vendors paid an exhibit fee in order to participate. So we feel that's what the existing funds in the accounts are for. So there's nothing limiting us from closing the account and reallocating them to a different fund.
And you did tell me it doesn't all have to go in the same fund.
No, it's up to you on how you want to allocate the funds. It can all go in one spot. You can put it in 10 different accounts. Please don't. But you could.
If we wanted to put a portion of it into a particular account, and let's say we get to the end of the fiscal year and there's still funds left there, is it zero out or will we be able to carry that money over into the next fiscal year?
No, whatever fund you place these dollars in, it will roll over into the fund balance. Yep, it becomes fund balance. And then that can be spent in future years, just like I believe the general fund had a deficit budget this year, knowing you would dip in general fund balance. It'd be the same purpose, depending on where you put it.
Any other questions for Megan? How about discussion on where you'd like to see this money used or how you'd like to see it used?
I'd like to add to the parks.
Yeah. I agree.
Where else could we use it? I would like to consider maybe we take half of it and put it into an account that we could utilize for Christmas fantasy or whatever else may come up throughout the year. And the other portion or half be distributed between the McQueen House fund and Parks and property for parks. No longer Parks and property.
And you know, McQueen House fund is near and dear to my heart. However, my thoughts in regard to that, and I appreciate what you've said. The McQueen House is stable. And we've put quite a bit of money into it, which it needed. But it is, I mean, the foundation's stable, yet exterior's been repainted, the roof's new, the inside, you know, they're putting some of the historical fund money into that. But I mean, it's in really great shape. Even the outside, the trees have been trimmed and so forth and so on. But for the parks, Megan, I'm gonna turn back to you because I always forget what this is called. What's that thing called that we have to do?
So there's a five-year plan. And I met with the park committee a week or two ago. The five-year plan will allow the city to apply to the DNR for some really nice grant opportunities. The five-year plan is gonna cost anywhere, probably $8,000 to $15,000 was the most recent quote we were given. And what that plan does is it looks at the inventory of the city parks. This was done before. The last one was, I think, 2011 to 2013 or 2018. So that has expired. It would be refurbishing that plan. It calls for public comment. You have to survey the residents, like what are their needs? What do they want to see in the parks? Like what kind of improvements? Not just does the city want to do, but input from the residents. So it's a long process. It probably takes three to four months to complete. So once we get that process complete, it opens the door so that we can submit the five-year plan to the DNR. Their open enrollment period begins in April every year, so it won't happen this year. If our, once our DNR plan is, our five-year plan is approved by the DNR, they then have three or four really big grant opportunities, like we're talking like millions of dollars, open in their grant, open enrollment period. A lot of them only have a 25% match. So taking the Perry Fest money, which I think is about $12,000 right now, would be a really nice nest egg to put into the Parks Fund so that once we do get the five-year plan in place and we can start applying for DNR grants, we'll have match money. Because right now, we don't have match money sitting in the Parks Fund waiting for that opportunity.
And the five-year plan does benefit more than just the parks.
Yep, and it is a portion of the master, is it a 40-year master plan? I think 40 years is the, how long is the master plan?
Do you know that?
I think it's 20 years. Okay. So the Parks Plan that is a part of the active master plan has now expired. So it does benefit more than just the parks. It's just a city benefit.
So most likely, the city would pay to achieve the five-year plan for the cost of that. But then if this money were in the Parks Fund, if there was a grant available, it would be, like you said, a nice nest egg for matching.
Right, yeah. We'd have to prove that we have matching funds and this would be a nice way to do that.
I'll withdraw my thoughts with one caveat, and that is we need to make certain that as we go forward with the Park Five-Year Plan, that we're doing that in concert with the Planning Commission because we had begun to have, the Planning Commission had begun to have some discussion about the great need to get our master, the city's master plan updated. And admittedly, we get that sidelined a little bit by some other more pressing issues. Hopefully, we'll be able to get back to that soon. And that's gonna take some funding as well, so we need to dovetail those two activities together.
And they work well together. I mean, if we've got them both updated, it just makes everything better.
Right. The Park Plan is really a subset of the city's master plan.
Good point. Any further discussion? The fund does have $12,226.45.
I move that we authorize the clerk to close the City Perry Fest account and have the $12,226.45 funds be donated into the City Parks Fund.
Second.
It's been moved by Mike and seconded by Steve to authorize the clerk to close the City Park Fest account and have the, I'm sorry, I said that wrong, the City Perry Fest account and have the $12,226.45 be donated into the City Parks Fund. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We will now move to new business. And I would entertain a motion to move into closed session to meet with our attorney.
Move that the council go into closed session to discuss attorney-client communication.
Second. Motion from Larry, seconded by Mindy, to go into closed session. All those in favor of that motion, please, we have to do roll call on this one, don't we? Please do roll call. Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Larry Lambert?
Yes.
Mindy Gallagher?
Yes.
McConnell? So we will, do I get to talk?
Only a talk.
That's right. How shall we do this? Do you want to meet in here and push everybody in the hall? Or we can get up and go into the other room?
Ready?
You ready?
Yep.
Next on our agenda is a possible motion to authorize the mayor to sign a separation agreement.
I move that we authorize the city's labor council to prepare and present to Dory Wartman a separation agreement and general release and recognition of her service to the city and to authorize the city's mayor to sign such agreement if it is found acceptable.
Second.
Motion from Mindy, seconded by Steve, that we authorize the city's labor council to prepare and present to Dory Wartman a separation agreement and general release and recognition of her service to the city and to authorize the city's mayor to sign such agreement if it's found acceptable. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
You drive safe.
Now we're moving to an exciting part of the evening. Chad Fuller, if you would come forward. We have an open council seat. And Chad Fuller, who lives at 338 Oakwood Lane here in Perry, has come forward and indicated his willingness to serve in that empty council seat. And so I, the mayor of the city of Perry, appoint Chad, looking for council's approval.
I move that we approve the mayor's appointment of Chad Fuller to the council.
Second.
It's been moved by Larry and seconded by Mindy to approve the appointment of Chad Fuller to council. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Madam Clerk, would you like to swear him in?
I can do that.
I will take a picture while you do that. Are you ready? Raise your hands and you're gonna repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That you will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Perry.
Of the city of Perry.
And that you will faithfully perform.
I will faithfully perform.
The duties as appointed.
The duties as appointed.
Council member.
Council member.
According to the best of your ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Can you sign and date here? You can have a seat right there, Chad. Thank you. We appreciate you stepping up.
Thanks. Right here, next mic.
Either one. That's fine. Did anybody have any words of wisdom to pass along to Chad?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
We have a Zoom meeting. And I think Devin can get us going on that. If it's okay, counsel, if you don't mind, we'll jump down to the next agenda item while she's getting things set up for that Zoom report. And that is a possible amendment to the Perry City Council rules of procedures regarding council committees. We did discuss this last time, but kind of finalizing it with this motion and have someone who makes that motion read through the rules of procedure amendment that is included there.
I move that the following amendments to the Perry City Council rules of procedure be adopted. The rules of procedure are amended as follows. One, council committees. The following two paragraphs will be inserted before paragraph titled "Workgroup." Excuse me. Council committees, structure of standing committee. Each standing committee shall consist of three council members appointed by the mayor as requested by a council or mayor. Each standing committee shall meet to provide information pertaining to said committee and make recommendation to council. Committee membership will be for a two-year term, subject to reappointment. Standing committees as follows. Ordnance, parks, technology and communications, personnel and labor negotiations.
Looking for a second to that motion?
Second.
Mike? Moved by Larry, seconded by Mike, has read. All those in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And Chad, just so you know, of those four standing committees, you will be a member of two of them. And I'll let you know what those are.
Okay.
When you come in to meet with Devin to do what she needs to get information from you and give you keys and things like that, we can sit down for a few minutes and go through those things. Now we just need to get finished setting up for our Zoom meeting with our grant writer, James Hissong, who will be giving us a report. James? If you are there, we are ready for you.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Well, good evening. Just gonna pull up my notes here. All right. Well, first I thought I would just start with a quick update on some of the grant activity for the last few months since we started working together. I believe everyone is aware that the city has applied for a rural development grant to assist with the cost of the water tower maintenance project. So I anticipate hearing back about that grant here within the next few weeks. The Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development has just said that awards will be made in late February. And so we're getting to that point. I do see that the board has a meeting on the 23rd. So I wouldn't be surprised if announcements were made shortly after that board meeting for those grants. Additionally, I assisted in the submission of a first responder training and recruitment grant for the Southwest Chiwasi Emergency Services Alliance. To give a lot of credit to Dan Monroe and Guy at the fire authority there as they did a lot of the heavy lifting and I served more in a technical assistance capacity. We applied for a little over $150,000 for a variety of different needs around training and recruitment. That grant included power assist loading devices, a cardiac monitor, and then training within Michigan first responder courses, training for EMT courses, and also EMS instructor training. So that grant was just submitted here earlier this week. And we should find out no more than 60 days from now about the outcome of that grant. And so first, before I get into the other And so first, until I, before I get into the other list of potential grants I wanted to review, are there any questions about the grants that we submitted so far?
I don't think anybody has any. James, can you hear me okay?
No.
Okay. I think I heard. It's a little soft, but I think I heard that there weren't any questions at this time.
What's the timeline on the first responder grant?
The first responder, I think we'll find out a lot sooner, but the grant guidance did say that the most would be a 60-day timeline. So we'd find out, you know, potentially sometime in April at the longest. You know, that grant, it was part of the state's, one of the supplemental spending bills that has passed so far using some of the state's relief dollars. And it's hard to get a sense of the competitiveness. I know a lot of communities put in for it. There were about five, there's $5 million, $5 million available statewide in that program. And communities could apply for up to $100,000 in two categories, so $200,000 total. So I do think that there will be more applications submitted than money to go around. And so it'll be interesting to see how the department prioritizes applications. And I wouldn't be surprised if there were some partial awards made out of that program and if they, you know, prorated some of the requests so that they could fund more applications. But hopefully, we'll hear more about that program here shortly.
James, can you hear me better if I talk from over here? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're coming.
Okay. This is Sue Hammond.
Hi, Sue.
Thank you for joining us by Zoom tonight. Our council indicated that no one else had any questions regarding what you've talked about so far. So you can move on.
Okay, perfect. And so I did hear a little bit about the council's conversation earlier about the DNR Parks and Rec Plan, and you couldn't see me, but I was grinning from ear to ear with that. So that is one of the areas that I thought I'd talk about this evening because there are grants that are coming up. And I think it was that Devin that was presenting on the need for a Parks and Recreation Plan in order to qualify for some of those grants.
Actually, that was Megan Galbraith, our treasurer. You have talked with her and emailed with her before that was Megan.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, and she's spot on. So those grants, for the majority of them, you do need to have a five-year Parks Plan approved in order to qualify. And there's three major grants that come out around the same time, with applications all due April 1st. And so in order to apply, so for this year's grants, you would have had to have your Parks Plans submitted and approved by February 1st. And so she's right in the assessment that most likely you won't be eligible for any of the Parks Grants this year, but hearing that the plan is in the works, that's great news for future grants. There is one caveat to one of the programs, and I'll just briefly mention it in case it applies. But one of the grants that the DNR administers is called the Rec, Recreation Passport Program. And you don't necessarily have to have an approved Parks Plan to apply for that grant. If the city has a project that is also included in a capital improvement plan that has been passed by the city. So I don't know if you have any Parks-related items already budgeted for either, you know, future years, if you have a capital improvement plan. So that's one other way to potentially access the DNR Recreation Passport Grant Program, potentially even still this year if a project was also included in a capital improvement plan. Otherwise, yeah, we'll probably have to wait. I do see there's a number of items on the sort of the wish list that I was sent. I see, you know, a potential water park for children, creation of a dog park, potentially replacing play equipment, paths, benches, that sort of thing. Those all would be eligible expenses for those grant programs through the DNR. And Megan was right that a lot of those programs have a 25% match. And the Recreation Passport Grant Program, the grant can go up to $150,000. And for the Michigan DNR Trust Fund, the grant can go up to $300,000. And then depending on what project you're submitting, the competitiveness factor for those projects can, you know, you can be strategic in which program you apply for. For instance, the Trust Fund really favors projects that have a high degree of natural resource value or involve trails and things of that nature. And so projects that include that score better in that program. Whereas the Recreation Passport Program would be a good one to look at for maybe the play equipment or something that doesn't, wouldn't necessarily score as high in the other program.
James, can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
Is that usually a matching grant? Would we typically have to have money in there as well or as a straight grant?
So those ones would require at least a 25% match.
Okay.
And there is another, there's a third program that could go up to $500,000 a grant, but that one requires a 50% match.
And do you use in-kind services, James?
Devin is asking if we can do in-kind services as part of our match.
Yes, yep, they will include, so if you like have like forced account labor, they call it, so if the staff were to do some of that or if you had a donation of goods, there's a way of calculating that in-kind match. So it doesn't necessarily have to all be provided in a cash match.
Okay, thank you.
But those grades are reimbursement. So, you know, sometimes cash flow and, you know, just something to keep in mind too for those projects, you'd have to have that available funding upfront. One of the programs, can you see me right now if I were to share something on the screen? Would that come through?
Yes, we can see you very well, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to share my screen here for a program that could be of interest for a Parks-related project. So there is a program out there called the Public Spaces Community Places Program, and it's run through the Michigan Economic Development Council Corporation, excuse me. And what it does is they have a matching grant that will match dollars raised by the community through what's called a crowdfunding campaign. And so basically, a crowdfunding campaign is an online campaign where anybody can donate and contribute towards a project. And in this program, if you hit your goal, then the MADC will match your, match the dollars raised up to your goal with a grant. And so this is a really creative program that communities have used for things like dog parks. So I'm showing this campaign because this is actually one that I helped coordinate for a dog park. And the community had set a goal of only $12,000 for this, but they did have some other grants that were included. So they had gotten some local support from a community foundation. But, you know, once they were ready, they put together a fundraising page. You have to apply to the program, but as long as you're transforming the public space and you're eligible for the program itself, then it's a pretty simple process. And then you would launch your campaign and try to solicit donations from both the general public, but what you see a lot of time are local businesses contributing. And the way that people encourage those donations is by having some of these giving tiers. So you could have a sponsorship level for businesses where they have, you know, maybe naming rights to a bench or some other park amenity and attract some donations that way. And so this could be a project if, as you're developing your Parks Plan, but you don't want to wait, that you could consider pursuing in the meantime as you're working to gain your eligibility for those DNR brands.
That looks really interesting. I think we could do something like that. That would be nice.
It's a really great program too, because not only are you improving your parks, but you're really engaging the whole community. And it's one of those things where, you know, you can gain a lot of excitement around a project. And, you know, it's only the people who want to donate contribute. And so if it's something that you think the community would really value or get behind, that's what, that's what would make a project like that really successful, is if you can find something that would get people excited.
Very good.
And so as I went down, so that kind of covered some of the Parks and Recreation funding that I thought, you know, as I looked at some of the items on your list would be a fit. You'd also have a bullet point here for trees, for city-owned property, tree planting. There is a tree planting grant through the DTE and Energy Foundation that will come out in April. And you could qualify for up to $4,000 of grant funding for that program. And so that's one that I just wanted to highlight that we can send when we see that grant open as well.
Do you have to designate where you'll be using that? Or can you decide when you know if you get it?
I think they do, they want to see it on publicly-owned property, but it sounded like that's was sort of the goal.
Right, yeah.
But I think you'd have to have a general description of where trees would be. But there might be a little bit of flexibility. I've actually, I have not gone through this grant before. It's relatively small, it's a $4,000 grant. And I think it's designed to be pretty accessible so that, you know, it doesn't take a whole lot to apply for it. But when those grant guidelines are released, I can certainly circle back to.
Yes, if you would. My thought, council, just so you know, in that was we've got a whole lot of scrub trees along the right of way of the railroad and the city park right here, right up by City Hall. So I was thinking if we could get trees that would look nice and, you know, make that look nicer. So we could definitely say, yeah, this is where we want them, yeah. Okay. So, yeah, check that one off.
Perfect. I'm going to skip ahead to one of the items, which was for, you know, sort of the DPW, the larger ticket items, more of the water infrastructure items that were on the list. And I'm going to once again share my screen here. And so some of the things that we're tracking, the programs, are going to be the programs that are coming through through the infrastructure bill. And so that was the large funding bill that was passed at the federal level. And most of the programs through the infrastructure bill have yet to open. So even though that money has been allocated, many of these programs are now just starting to be released. And you'll start to see a lot of the programs through the infrastructure bill start to roll out. So here's one that I was going to highlight. You know, there's an item on the list talking about, you know, potential sidewalks or, you know, pedestrian safety-type projects, I think was mentioned. So there is a program that was included in the infrastructure bill called the Safe Streets and Roads for All, All Program. And that is going to be a $5 billion competitive grant program through the Department of Transportation and really focusing on local governments to essentially, you know, help reduce crashes, fatalities, especially with pedestrians. And so as we look for potential funding, this is one that I will keep an eye out for, knowing that, you know, there's potentially some safety in pedestrian, pedestrian safety needs in the city. It says here that the grants are expected to open in May 2022. And the resource that I'm reading, Sue, I believe I sent these to you, but this is from Senator Peter's office. And I'm not sure, I imagine Senator Stepanow also has something similar. But it does a really nice job of summarizing the federal programs that will be coming.
Yes. Yes, you did send that. And just speaking to sidewalks, do you know if that program covers repair of existing as well as creation of those that don't exist?
You know, I haven't seen a lot out here, out there for these programs yet. So I think that we'll start to see more as we get closer when they're released. And my hope is, is that there's a long enough application period that we can adequately respond to these guidelines.
Okay.
But I don't know yet. There is a state program that I was going to bring up as well as it relates to sidewalks. There is a program that's administered through the Michigan Department of Transportation called the Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP is the acronym. And the TAP program can also fund sidewalks, bicycle paths, in ways for pedestrians and others to safely travel. And really, it's targeting that. As opposed to this one, which also includes, it looks like this will also include, you know, funding for street improvements as well. TAP is really looking at those alternative transportation methods. And so that one might be a grant that we could reach out to MDA about to discuss the city's non-motorized needs. So each region has a TAP coordinator assigned to their region. And I think that would be the first step if you wanted to analyze whether or not your project would be a fit for that program, is to reach out to the state coordinator. And I'd be happy to facilitate that discussion, perhaps.
That'd be great. That is what I see, and I think most of our council does too, see that as a real need because we have a lot of people who walk for exercise here. And many of our sidewalks are dangerous. They're uneven and you can trip easily. And so, yeah, do that. Check that one, look into that one.
Yeah, and I know the TAP grant is one that will require a match as part of its competitiveness factor. So I want to say that projects with 50% match or higher are more competitive than that project. So, you know, depending on what you have available for those repairs, that can sometimes be a barrier. I'm not sure about match yet for any of the programs coming under the infrastructure bill.
John Souter is our superintendent of our Public Works Department, and I'm sure he could speak to what he has earmarked in his budget for sidewalk repair. But he's not here tonight, so we can check in with him.
See, open my notes again here. And so what my purpose tonight was, is just to discuss some of these projects and then, you know, seek the council's guidance in where you'd like me to spend my time in terms of priority, which projects or programs to start with in tracking down. Also included in the list was a number of, you know, water infrastructure-related projects. So the lead line replacement mandate that's coming or here that, you know, by 2040, that those lines would be to be replaced to see, you know, a new well site, potentially a second water tower, and some of the other needs. I know you've applied for the MDR grant for the water tower maintenance, but if that doesn't come through, that, you know, that would still be an ongoing need. So one of the things that we're tracking is also the state's use or intended use of their ARPA and infrastructure bill funding. So the state has received a substantial allocation as well. And for the most part, they haven't decided exactly how to spend it. And so there have been some really significant bills that have been proposed. So in late last year, the Senate passed a $3.3 billion spending bill for water infrastructure that has not passed the House yet. But I know they were considering a $2.4 billion bill with a similar scope. And then in the governor's executive budget that was just released, there was also considerable amount of funding proposed for water infrastructure and lead line replacement projects. And so I believe throughout this year, we will see because it's been included in every sort of proposed budget or supplemental spending bill. And so I think it's just a matter of what that matter of what that looks like and what will actually come to fruition. But I think we'll see some significant resources available for water infrastructure related projects coming through the state this year. And that's on top of potentially competitive applications that we could submit through the Infrastructure Bill at the federal level. But so far, there's nothing specific. There were, there were some, there was some funds out there. There was a drinking water assessment, asset management grant out there that would help identify where your lead service lines are. And there were a couple other grants through a package called the Clean Water Plan at the state level, but that, those applications happened prior to when I became engaged with the city. So I do believe that we've missed at least that initial round, but that was very small compared to some of these programs that are coming.
And I believe, again, that would be something we'd need to check in with John, but if I recall quickly from talking to him, he has already done a good portion of the location of the lines and we really don't have many.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have all galvanized, but, but not let. So anyway, but again, that would be something we'd want to check in with John, but he's been pretty much on top of that. So.
That's a good, a good position to be in.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, a lot of communities are really struggling with that mandate. So I will, I will stay on top of those programs and send updates as, as they come out and as we hear rumblings. We'll have another Grant Alert newsletter coming out just tomorrow with a few programs that could be of interest. And so has that been working so far when those newsletters have come out? Sue, I believe those usually go to you and then distributed that way.
Correct, yes. I forward them on to Councilor Megan and Devon, John, whoever, you know, they're appropriate for. But I just forward them on. So yes, that seems to work well.
Well, let me know if you ever want anybody added or other, any questions related to that.
Sure. I think I did change, you know, get Megan put on for you instead of Joanne, who was our treasurer before. She's retired and Megan is the new treasurer. But I think that's all situated with you, right Megan?
Yep.
Yeah, she says, yeah, that's all done. So we're good there. Does it, council, do you have anything specific you want to ask, James, or any questions about any of this stuff, anybody?
No, I just reiterate your comments that you made about the sidewalks, you know, having walked all of the sidewalks in the city, you know, multiple times. We've got some real opportunities for not only some new sidewalks, but certainly some repair that we could use some help with. So anything you can identify in that area, James, is going to be a plus.
Larry Labor is one of our walkers. He walks all over the city. My husband is a walker, but he walks in the street. My husband does, because it's not safe to walk on the sidewalk. So I mean, we need, we need to do something with our sidewalks. So hopefully we can come up with something that'll work.
Sometimes with these programs, they will look at what's called a, like a complete streets plan, or they'll want the community to really look at their transfer, their non-motorized transportation facilities, you know, your sidewalks, any potential trails, things of that nature. And it's almost like the DNR grants, right? So they want to see that evidence of community engagement and planning in order to access some of that funding.
Yeah.
The TAP grant doesn't come out and necessarily require it, but I think that we'll have to see, and it might be one of those things where they want to see more planning done on, you know, how we're prioritizing or looking at those routes. And there were some other programs. There's one called the Safe Routes to School Program. So if you can show that, you know, essentially some of these sidewalks and whether it's a pedestrian crosswalk or something of that nature is needed for, you know, safe passage of students to school, there's potential funding through there. So there's a lot of different angles you can take. But that could be, that could be one if the council would like you to start there first that we begin exploring. The only other grants that I wanted to point out at this moment, other than the ones that certainly we'll continue to send, there were a number of items needed or listed for the library and the McQueen House. And that is something that, you know, there could be potential grants out there. Building renovation grants, I think, are probably bricks and mortar, one of the harder grants to come by for any building, whether it's a library or City Hall or Fire Department. One of the programs which I believe you're aware of, the Community Facilities Program, does provide funding, but most of the grants related to the USDA Community Facilities Program really don't go towards the facilities themselves. And so I believe that the city just accessed that program to purchase a vehicle, is that my understanding?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's great. But the program is also open for larger projects such as a library renovation or really any sort of facility that's used by the public. But it, but it would be mostly a loan program at that point rather than grant funding. It's a great program, but just not usually, you know, communities that are looking for grants. That program most likely isn't a fit because the grant funding available is just a small portion.
Yeah. I think we'd probably consider something like that if we were going to be purchasing a new building for a library or something. But right now, the Community District Library is working in conjunction with the city and renovating the building that we now own and use as a library. So I think we're good there for now. And the McQueen House is pretty stable right now, but we just want to make sure we have future funds and know what's out there. So yeah, keep us informed.
Yeah, one of the programs that could happen, that could be available more for like programming, but potentially for capital improvements is through the Michigan, it's now the Michigan Arts and Culture Council, but formerly Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs. They do have some programs that will come out here shortly. And those grants could be due June 1st. And so I can send those when they, they come out as well. Probably a little bit, libraries can qualify, but it'd have to be for, you know, humanities or cultural type initiatives. The McQueen House, I think, would probably be a good fit for, for some of those programs.
So I could forward that information on to the Historical Society that runs the museum in the McQueen House?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll do.
And so my understanding, the city owns it, but then programming happens through the Historical Society, is that correct?
That's exactly right. Yeah.
Okay. So those were the major projects that I just, I wanted to highlight this evening. And then get your take on, you know, any sort of direction that you'd like to provide us, other than obviously with, you know, just some of the ongoing grants that come out. Is there anything that you'd like us to start researching first? Is that the sidewalk initiative? Is that where I'm hearing possibly consensus?
Yes. Yes, I'm seeing a lot of nodding, so yes.
We're covered with snow right now, but as we get to springtime, we look to be in a position to start to take some action if we can.
Yeah. Sidewalks.
Wonderful. Well, we'll start there.
That dog park thing too, I like that. The dog, the dog park, one that you showed us where you get matching money with funds that are donated, that you could send that information to. Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that's a great one. Do you know, do you already have a property or, you know, piece of publicly owned land that, that you feel would be a good fit for that?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then that would be a great, a great one. I'll send information on that here. Well, unless there are other questions, I think that's all I had. And then we'll just stay in touch. And if there's anything else, feel free to reach out and we'll just continue plugging away. But it's been a pleasure to assist the city with a few grants here and look forward to hopefully some, some good news coming soon.
Great. I think council is all set. Anybody else have anything for James? Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Very nice update. Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
You too. Have a good evening.
Is there any other business that needs to come before council at this time or any one that would like to engage in public comment? And we'll open for council discussions and observations if there are any from our council. What about items for our next agenda? I did ask John Plomin, who was our representative to the I-69 corridor, to give a report on that because they had a meeting two weeks ago. So when he comes to give his commissioner report at our March 3 meeting, he'll also report on that group, the I-69 corridor. Anybody else? Any agenda? Okay, all right. It is 8:21 and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Welcome, Chairman.
Thank you.